Well, it is five thirty. We do have a quorum. So shall we start the meeting? Is everybody ready? Okay, so we call the meeting of the Berry City Planning Commission on Thursday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five to order. The first item on the agenda is adjustments to the agenda. Does anybody have any adjustments or anything to add or whatever? Have anything, Janet?
I don't have anything.
Anyone else? Okay, we also, um, next item on the agenda is public comment. I don't see anybody on the Zoom. I assume there's nobody in the meeting room either?
That is correct.
Okay, so we don't have any public here or public comment. So the next item is approval of the minutes from the January twenty-third meeting. Those were included in the packet. So would be happy to entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
I can motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, really, really moved? Any second?
All second. This is Wendy.
Wendy seconded. Uh, so the minutes have been, the motion has been made. Are there any corrections or adjustments anybody has to the agenda? Or I mean, the minutes? If not, we could take a vote on, on the minutes. So, uh, all in favor say aye and/or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the minutes have been approved. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, a warrant public hearing on the changes to the proposed changes to the Unified Development Regulations. So I assume we can start that. That was the time in the, the public notice for, for five thirty?
Yep.
Okay.
You would open, open your, when you're ready.
Yep, so I think we're ready to, um, open the hearing. And Janet, included in our packet, the proposed changes, which are, are not really a lot, but, um, this would be the time to discuss them. This is dealing with the allowing residential use in the downtown UC one district. Uh, so long as the entrance and access is not from the front.
Correct. And remember, these will also include the interim that got passed last year.
Yep. Okay, that's correct. So I did have one question about the draft changes. I think it's a clerical thing.
Okay.
And that is, um, under the allowed uses, number one, the very end of the item one, uh, says provisions of subsections three, two, oh, one. Excuse me, another phone is ringing and, um, and three, two, oh, one G.
Yep, you are.
I'm, the sentence doesn't seem to read that the, I don't know what the difference is between three, two, oh, one and three, two, oh, one and the G is, uh, it looks like crossed out.
Um, so the first three, two, oh, one is, uh, is, is absolutely a clerical error on my part. That is supposed to be a different, um, a different, um, section.
Okay.
Uh, I have it on my, sorry, I have it in my notes from the last meeting, which I did not bring in the room with me. I can go get them if you'd like, but it's, um, it's a, it's a, whatever the first section is and three, two, oh, one. I crossed off G because more of three, two, one in its whole applies than just G.
Okay. So, um, I would be perfectly happy just to, um, you know, having the minutes reflect that, that, that clerical change will be made. And then you, you can make that before it moves on to whatever the next step is. Is that okay with everyone else? I'm seeing heads nodding. So we'll just let the minute show that, that, uh, that is a, just a clerical error and Janet will correct it.
Yeah, I'll be sure to include that.
Is there anything else? Um, anyone wanted to ask out or talk about in the proposed change and the interim things? I think, I don't, I think they're all fine. I, we went through them once a while ago. It's just making them, them permanent.
Yeah, and I just want to be sure on the table, so that would be the next page, that I actually included all of the, the permitables with the, with the conditions, the P with a subscript one that everybody wanted. Um, this is the notes that I took, um, but just like I said again, wanted to be sure, uh, from everyone else's recollection that in fact, it was, we decided to make these three changes, not four of them.
Hmm. Yeah, and I think the, um, other thing is that, that this would make it a permitted use, not conditional, which means it would be up to the zoning administrator to determine, um, if the various requirements are met. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, you're correct, David.
And that's what everybody wanted instead of involving the DRB, just to make sure. And of course, if the, the, the zoning administrator should deny it, uh, a request, it can always go to the DRB, but this just makes it more streamlined for approval.
Yes, and there's another condition in our Unified Development Ordinance that, um, if it's for a site plan approval, that the administrative officer can, can choose to pass anything they want to the DRB, even if we have the authority to issue the permit. So there's always that as well.
And you're comfortable with, um, applying these and making sure that, that any residential on first floor is, is not interfering with the, the business piece of the front of the building?
Yes, as long as, like, like we talked, was it a couple of months ago? The, the wording on page twenty-four under allowed uses is not ambiguous enough that it would lead somebody astray. I, I think we're covered, um, and I feel comfortable, but it's the, this, the commission's, you know, nod to this. So I want to be sure everyone is, is good as well.
So is everyone, everyone okay with this? I sort of, sort of vacillate between this makes a lot of sense, or should this be a DRB kind of thing? But I guess I kind of fall on the side of not making it overly complicated or expensive for somebody to do this.
Yeah, I think that letter detail is key because we're trying to sort of make things simpler, not more.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you, Joe. Yeah, because the price of construction is still astronomical.
Yeah. And anyone else have any, any other comments or thoughts? So I think Janet, if there's nothing else, that would, then we could close the hearing. And then, and then we could determine, and I guess then, then it would go forward, then we can determine to send it forward to the city council. Is that the next steps?
If you, if someone could motion, i- if you could ensure there's a motion taken care of, and yes, the next step will in fact be city council after a thirty-day waiting period.
Okay, so, um, I guess we need a motion to end the public hearing?
A, a motion to approve what you've decided for the revisions. Since you didn't do a motion to open the public hearing, you opened it, and I wrote down the time. If you, if I could get a motion on, um, the content, that'd be lovely.
I'll make that motion.
One second. This is Wendy.
Okay, and is there any other discussion? If not, now we can take a vote. So all in favor of adopting the proposed changes and, and also the sending the interim zoning onto the city council, please say aye or raise your hand.
David, sorry.
Okay, so Becky's here as well. We're going very fast, Becky. So we were just, um, just having the hearing on, did you hear that? And just finishing that up. So, uh, I think the motion passed.
Yeah, it was unanimous.
Yep.
Yeah, I do. Can I ask you a quick question? Um, we did talk about that clerical error. I was just wondering if we should have included that in the motion or not? That it passes just, just to correct that moving forward? Or we noted that, so is it okay to just not have that in the motion?
I mean, sort of adding it as a conditional, like, moving to approve it with this change. I mean, we do that with minutes sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, yeah, that's fine.
If that's, yeah, if that's the preferred language, I can amend the motion to say that.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry. I want to interrupt you, but that we all voted great.
That's, 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 I think what we were all voting, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make it clear when I write it up.
So with that, I think we can close the public hearing. And move on to the next item of the agenda, which is old business. We have, um, the commission charges, and I think Janet, did you just provide that for informational purposes? Or is there something you're hoping we can, we do with this?
No, it's absolutely the former rather than the latter. Um, if you recall, we talked about when we had visitors about the vacant building ordinance. Um, you wanted, uh, some of you wanted to know if you had the authority to work on ordinances. And ordinances and bylaws are actually two different things. So not only did I include, uh, page eight and nine out of the Department of Housing and Community Developments Manual, um, but I also included, just for your clarity and awareness, um, it starts on page nine, that's from the league. Nope, did I not include it? I had a, maybe it's in a different page. I thought I included, um, the difference between, um, bylaws and ordinances. It was a two-pager from the league. It looks like it did not get in there after all. My apologies. Um, but there, in fact, is, I'll quickly run through. There, there is a difference. Um, you're in charge of bylaws. So zoning, flood hazard, subdivision, things like that. As a commission, you also have the ability to work on studies. So you could work on a study that related to an ordinance, but ordinances fall with the city council. So I just wanted to put that out there so all of you understood, um, differences and your charges and things like that.
Okay. And I was kind of hoping, you know, maybe as part of staff updates, you could update us on whether you did talk to Nicholas about the, the, the building, you know, uh, deteriorated building kind of ordinance or things and, and those rules.
The which one? I'm sorry?
Well, remember, we talked about, um, what, whether the city, what the city could do about dilapidated buildings that is not being maintained. And we kind of talked about what you just shared, which is, we think that would be an, that's an ordinance that really is not the planning commission's jurisdiction, but you also said you were going to talk to Nicholas about next steps and whether the city might want to get some legal advice and input on, on the ordinance as it is, changes, and you know, what, what might be legal or appropriate or what might not, because that's something that's certainly been talked about in the community.
Sure, I, I can cover that under staff updates.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
So I would like, people like to talk about the economic development portion of the, um, of the city plan. That's the next item on the agenda. And there's really nothing in my mind very surprising about it. Um, but I don't know if people, if we want to just go through part by part, or if people want to comment and offer thoughts on, on what's included here.
I think the model we used previously where we started, just kind of go through it, and then kind of discuss it as we go, seemed like it worked well.
Okay, so, so the, you know, the, um, economic development talks about, you know, the need for, for the well-being of the community and health that, you know, economic, uh, development is, is an important thing, that, you know, having business and vitality and a strong economy in the community is important. And on that first page, which is page twelve of the plan, it lists some things that, um, create a good environment. Um, and I think some of them, the city does well, some of them maybe is tougher. So for example, lower taxes is a, is a challenge in Berry City. Um, I think, you know, my sense is the regulations and permitting is, is, is pretty efficient and fair. I think some might disagree. Um, there's certainly avail, there's, there's certainly, you know, challenge with availability and affordability of housing. Um, and, and quality of infrastructure, we could probably talk about a lot, but Berry does have pretty complete infrastructure as far as water and sewer and, and, you know, access to electric power and, and so on. Um, so I think, you know, the key points, the facilities and infrastructure, um, no, there's, there's, most of the land in Berry is filled, but, uh, there's a lot of older, older buildings, and that's particularly true of some of the granite sheds and, and things that aren't used that way anymore. And the downtown revitalization, um, you know, again, the downtown has been evolving, but I think, uh, particularly with the, with the Main Street improvement, the big dig, that, uh, Main Street is a lot, lot nicer than it was, but clearly there's still some, some challenges on Main Street. Um, a couple of things that are mentioned here is the Enterprise Alley. Um, and I think it mentions later some of the studies that have been done and nothing, you know, that haven't been really implemented. Uh, the labor force is, I think, both a strength and a weakness as the economy changes. So it does speak to programs offered within the city and region to assist with workforce training and education. But at least in my mind, an example I would give of a challenge to the workforce is a lack of tradespeople, plumbers, electricians, carpenters, uh, that kind of thing. And construction costs are very high. Material costs are very high, but it's also a challenge to, uh, line up the kind of people you need to do the work. Uh, this plan says city government is business friendly, good place to start and grow a business. And again, some of the issues and challenges, well, maybe I'll stop there. So that's kind of the little overview of key points. Is there anything anybody wanted to speak to or questions or thoughts? And some of this is thinking about what's still relevant and what may have changed, because before too long, the planning commission will be having to start work on an updated city plan. Okay, so why don't we move on to key points? So I think I mentioned that, you know, there is.
So Becky had her hand up, actually.
Oh, okay, Becky, go ahead.
Well, um, I was just, um, observing as I read through this, how much of this is like beyond the city's control? Right? Like, there's, there's a lot that the city has control over, but, um, so much of this is just beyond what's within our realm to change. So I guess, like, I'm curious, like, what's the balance there between, like, what the city has, you know, what goes into the city plan, particularly in a section like this on economic development within, like, our control?
Yeah, well, there certainly are many things that aren't in our control, but these are, I think, kind of, the way this works is you kind of lay out the big picture and the strengths and perhaps weaknesses. And then, and then when we get to the section at the end where you're talking about, or where it talks about, so what things can, what are the next steps the city can take? That's really where we have to focus on the things we, that can be done by the city to impact these things. But so, but so I think the start is, is a lot of things out of our control, but there are things that impact economic development. So that's how I kind of go at it. So, you know, the, the first part is a lot of, a lot of words and explanations about the issues and challenges in the, in the city, but they're not all things we can do something about.
Don't forget, um, according to statute, there's, um, several items that a city plan, a municipal plan has to meet, has to speak about. Um, and economic development is, is a, a necessary, would they call it an element? So it's an element of your plan that we have to at least say something about. Um, and so this section is actually updated from the twenty fourteen. Um, so this has got some longevity to it, obviously. Um, but I think it's important, especially for our little city, that we speak about economic development in some capacity to meet the element requirement.
Yeah, well, and there's certainly things as we get farther in this that, that can be done in the city. And, and some of the things in the plan as I, this section, as I read through it, have been done and have, are working well, and other things just haven't had anything happen at this point.
Go ahead.
Now, I was just gonna say, I think, I mean, some of these, like, just gonna pick one that we've actually touched on a little bit, like, you know, the availability and affordability of housing, like, we can't control that directly. Um, but we have talked about things that can impact it. Um, the one that really jumps out to me on that front is, is childcare quality, because that seems like that's kind of really beyond our scope, um, aside from just generally being supportive of, of businesses.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna add to that where, um, I think, you know, we're gonna strive to promote these sorts of things and, and activities, because I, I, I feel like having it in the plan, even though we can't necessarily control those things, it's having it in the plan itself, besides being a requirement for certain things to have in there, is good for a goal to strive towards. Or as we're, um, talking about different issues on, you know, different meetings that come up on the agenda, like having these things on here is, that's what we're striving towards, you know? So I think that, um, like, that's our goal, you know, to, to have these things.
Yeah, but, you know, so for something like childcare, if we wanted to have something in the plan, it might be as simple as saying we should be, uh, advocating that the state do some things. I'm not sure that's what we need to do in this plan, but, but, you know, these are the things that create a good environment for economic development. So again, it's a start of looking at the big picture and then focusing on the things that the city can do specifically. So key points are sort of observations about, um, Berry. Uh, again, probably when we work on the next plan, that those are not going to need to be updated. But, you know, the manufacturing section, sector has changed a lot since the granite industry was at its high point. And so there are a lot of buildings in, in the city that are, that are vacant, obsolete, or not well utilized. Uh, and that's, that's the challenge that, that we have. Um, the downtown, uh, revitalization is, is important. You know, Berry is a commercial center and, and a lot of people go through Berry over the course of a day. Um, but there have been a lot of changes. I think that Main Street has certainly much improved and started in the right direction, uh, with the big dig, but there's, there's certainly, uh, more to be done. And I think the changes in, again, since COVID, about a lot more people working remotely, uh, has an impact on downtown, both in terms of utilization of office space and also, uh, less people downtown that want to eat lunch out or whatever impacts, or do other shopping downtown impacts the business community. I think we talked a little bit about the labor force, that, you know, Berry has a history of, of sort of blue collar, good work ethic people, but there are, are also, uh, people who are not qualified for today's jobs or need some additional training or, or other kinds of assistance to get in the labor force. Uh, we think, and this is certainly something we could be discussing, is, is that the city, uh, Berry is a business friendly place to start to grow and grow a business. Um, I think that's largely true. I sometimes think the business community doesn't realize that, or doesn't realize the limits of, you know, what can and can't be done. But it's, you know, that's important. There any, any other, any thoughts about the, those sort of key points that are here? Are there any things that maybe are out of date or should be updated?
Um, I think on the, the subject of, um, sort of the changes after COVID related to, um, less, the less need for office space downtown, um, I think that strikes me as a real opportunity to address some of the housing shortages. Um, if there were things the city could implement to encourage conversion of some of that vacant office space into apartments.
Yeah, well, we just, uh, are sending on to the city council something that will help do that.
Yeah.
And also the, the interim zoning, you know, allows more housing density. So those are pluses, but what we can't really impact is the cost of construction. You know, materials and late, you know, you know, materials have gotten very expensive. Uh, the, the skilled tradespeople and people to do the work is getting to be harder to find. So it's harder to even find somebody to do the work if you want to. Uh, you know, another challenge in the downtown is if buildings have to have elevators installed, that's a very costly, uh, thing to do.
And sprinkler systems.
And sprinkler systems.
And.
Old buildings where those things aren't there.
On that idea specifically, I recall there at least were some federal grants that would kind of provide support for that. I don't know what the current status that is. A lot of that's in flux right now, but, um.
The state tax credit program provides funding for both those things. And that's state, a state program, so not impacted by the, whatever's happening at the federal level. I think the other thing in terms of like the housing realm, and I know this, Janet, this is something that you've explored, would be the neighborhood, um, develop designation that I think we've also talked about in this committee, um, as another source to, you know, it's not gonna solve all the housing issues, but maybe, um, another avenue the city could pursue to encourage, um, more housing development around the downtown.
Yes. Yes, on the to-do list. Yes, on the to-do list.
Other thing I was thinking about too is maybe the types of businesses, maybe we could attract different types of businesses that promote remote work, you know, or office spaces for those folks to use, you know, who may, I mean, that might bring in, well, housing is an issue, but, you know, other people living in the community at least, or being able to utilize that space. Just thinking of that space differently.
Yeah, the Berry Social Club is actually a business that's trying to do that. I don't know if you are familiar with them?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not very familiar, but I, I, I'm a little bit familiar.
But, you know, that's now a business that's, that's in a downtown building.
Yep.
That has some co-working space, it's very nice space. They have capability to sponsor, you know, events, like a, you know, wedding reception or, or, or other sort of events. So that's what they're trying to tap into, is providing a place for people who work independently or remotely.
Yeah.
For that matter, people who are retired and just want to go see people.
Yeah.
A place to go, so. It's just, that's an example of, like, you know, and I don't really know how they're doing, but that's, you know, I've been in there and it's, it's a very nice space.
My fear, I'd like to share this with, with, you know, because we're talking about this section, is the, the flood hazard regulations are really gonna, they're making it really hard. And, and obviously not intentionally, because it's the law. Not only do people have to fix their houses to a standard, but some of our buildings in the downtown have, have work needed, and if they're not a historic building, they don't get the benefit of, of some of the other. So for example, a historic building like City Hall, it flooded. If it was not historic, it would have to be elevated, but because it's a historic building, it falls into this really nice tidy bucket that says, do everything else you can to make it flood resilient. Not every building in our downtown, from Maple Avenue to the park, gets that benefit. And I worry sometimes, combined with building materials and the shortage of labor and among many other things, that it slows our ability to continue to revitalize our downtown. We've come so far in the twelve and a half years that I've worked here, and, and it's enjoyable to see things changing, and a lot more needs to happen. But we all know the climate is gonna make it that much harder. And I think that should be an important element, hopefully with the consultant we get and we start discussing this, this actual section. I feel like it's a big impact driver to our economy.
Yeah, so one of the challenges we have in the downtown is the old buildings all have basements. And they're really not viable for much with flooding. So, you know, businesses have had to figure out how to move all of their, you know, their, their heating and cooling and, and electric boxes and all out of a basement, which is expensive. And it also reduces space that's available for other things. So it is a challenge. Yes, Raylene has her hand up.
I agree, a challenge for sure, and on top of all of that, just the increases in the flood insurance alone. Astronomical, I know the building that I'm in, five thousand dollar per year in this last, this last renewal. So add that to every, all of this moving utilities upstairs and, and out of the basement, and it's definitely making things really tough, and it's making people make tough decisions of whether or not they're going to stay or how to move forward.
Yeah, I'm curious, Janet, if, you know, a new building that would be built downtown, like City Place as an example, would just be not have a basement, so it's gonna be on a slab or fountain, you know, of some sort. And the floor, the entry level floor just gets raised three feet or something to be outside of the flood zone.
You're correct, David. Berry City Place was, it was, is in the flood zone, but what they did was, they got a, I guess, like a certificate, it's a, I think it's a C L O M R, Colmer. They filled the lot to be able to raise the first floor. So the building is technically out of the flood zone now. And, and any new building, as David has said, is gonna have to follow these rules.
Yeah.
It's the existing stock that suffers.
Yeah, so I'm just curious, if, if, if I owned a downtown, old downtown building, and I decided to not use the basement any longer, I don't know that I'd want to fill it, because that would probably be prohibitively expensive, but just raise the first floor level, that three feet? Is that something that's compliant, or is it that you need to have the basement go away?
It's, it's, you have to make the basement go away. So in flood hazard rules, your first floor is, where is the actual first floor in your building? And more times than not, it's the building, it's the basement. And so then the next step is to, to figure out where is the, where is what they call the DFE, the design flood elevation? Then you have to have utilities at least two feet above the DFE. So sometimes some of our buildings have been able to keep their utilities in the basement. More times than not, they've had to figure out how to bring them on the first floor. And as someone else, you know, said, Raylene said, that's really expensive. Some, some of the electrical applications and invoices that we've seen to do just that is just amazing. So sometimes a building can leave their basement empty, and sometimes depending on their damage, if they've been flooded, they might not be able to. And here's the other thing that we're finding out as people are starting to move forward with, you know, being compliant with the rules is our, our housing stock, I don't know what our, our commercial buildings are, but our housing stock is the second oldest in the, in the state, I think, and at least maybe the country. I mean, we have really old housing stock. So when you fill in a basement, I believe it's called hydrostatic pressure, you're putting pressure on the walls from the inside out.
Yeah.
Water puts a, it's the hydrologic, something, pressure this way. And one person has found, an engineer said, this building cannot withstand having its basement filled in. So here we are, struggling with the rules when somebody really can't comply. So the basement issue becomes almost a case-by-case basement, yeah, case-by-case study. And whether they were damaged or not damaged, whether they just want to improve their building, and then how much are they spending? It's, it's not an easy thing to teach a building owner to know.
Yeah, and if they want to do a lot of work, a certain amount, then they have to do these things if they, you know, which discourages doing that work.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I'd like to just twinkle my nose and say, everybody took all these years of floods into account a long time ago, and we're up and out of the water, but we're not there yet, so.
So do we want to chat about issues and challenges, which I think we've actually been doing? But, you know, a couple of other things are, you know, we talked about the vacant building ordinance and whether that might be improved or changed, and what that might do. Another issue that was brought up is walkability and parking. The planning commission at that time, you know, felt that, that, that city isn't, not just the downtown, but the city in general is not as friendly to pedestrians and bicyclists. And, you know, the Main Street work did, did help some of those things, but getting from neighborhoods to downtown, or, you know, through town is on something, in a way other than by, by a, a motorized vehicle is a challenge. So that was an issue that was brought up and, and, you know, will need to be looked at again. I think we just talked a little bit about the building stock. But again, I think a, a new plan is going to have to address the issues of floodplain. And a good part of the city is, is impacted by that, and that might require some additional discussion or changes in the plan to, to address those things. I think we talked a little bit about unemployment and workforce development. The unemployment rates in the state are, are pretty low, but I think City of Berry's unemployment rate might be a little above the average. Another, you know, another kind of striking thing from then was the educational attainment. That at the time this plan was written, twenty-three percent of Berry residents held a bachelor's degree or higher compared with thirty percent, thirty-seven percent statewide. So I don't know if that's something we would want to revisit in the, in the next plan, and I'm not sure there's a lot the city on its own can, can do about that. Another thing that's been in the plan for a while is access to healthy food, and a lot of that has been about a downtown grocery store. And many of you remember Granite City Grocery and, and efforts that were made, but ultimately were not successful to, to locate a downtown grocery store. AR Market is downtown, and that's a grocery store, it's a small grocery store. So some would say that problem's been addressed, and others would say that's not really what, what was being talked about here. Again, something to think about. And-
Doesn't Capital Candy refer to themselves as their storefront as a grocery-
Oh, their store? I don't know.
Okay. I know they sell just about everything, but fresh meat in there.
Yeah, they do sell a lot of stuff.
Yeah, it is called Granite City Grocery.
Thank you.
We do have quality market. I mean, it's not in the downtown district, I don't think, but I mean, we have a lot of stuff there, which is close. I mean, it's walkable, I would say.
Well, anyhow, as I said, it was a, a kind of a big issue before. I think it might, you know, might be different now, but, you know, something worth, worth talking about, and it might be that, that the approach would be different than it was at the time the plan was written. The last thing in terms of issues and challenges is Berry's sort of perception and reputation. So, you know, the simple term for that is Scary Berry. That personally, I don't think is a very accurate thing, but that's what a lot of people think. And, you know, as this mentions, other cities in the state of similar size have similar challenges and issues, but maybe the perception is different. In some cases it is, some cases it isn't. But again, a, a challenge to, to, to consider. So I don't know if there's anything else under issues and challenges. Yes, Caitlin?
Yeah, thanks, Sue. And I, I, I wanted to just say one thing about the, that last point of reputation and perception. And this, this whole Scary Berry thing. I think the only people who think Berry has a bad reputation are people from Berry. I travel all over the state for work, and nowhere do I hear, when I tell them I live in Berry, no one is like, oh, Berry, that's not a good place, you know? It's, it feels like it's a perpetuation of art that we're doing to ourselves. Like, no one outside of Berry thinks of us the way we do.
Yeah.
So I don't know what the answer to that is, but I don't, I don't think we have a bad reputation.
Yeah, well, I, I, I tend to agree with that. And I think it's because a lot of times people haven't ever been to cities and seen, you know, if you go to Boston, and obviously it's not a comparison, but if you go to Boston and then come back, Berry seems pretty tame. Should we move on to strengths and opportunities? So one is taxes and, and there's a local option tax, but I think also people have a perception, and I'm not sure how accurate it is that Berry has very high tax rate. It certainly does nominally, but I always, maybe there is data out there to compare, but I always remember that, for example, the tax rate in Berry is very high, but the property, average property value on the grant list is much lower than other places. So, for example, Montpelier, I think, has a lower tax rate than Berry, but the average price of a house is probably twice what it is in Berry. So who's actually paying more in taxes when it comes to the part where you get your checkbook out and write out a check for the taxes? And, and, you know, the other thing that that doesn't address is affordability to the people who live in the community. So I think that's something that probably the plans rewritten, some of those things should be looked at. At least that's my, my perception. Now, we've, we, I think we've talked about regulations and permitting and, and you know, the challenges that go with that, but also that Berry is actually pretty, pretty reasonable compared to a lot of other places.
I think so. We try to make it as easy as possible for people.
Yeah, it's just people don't always know it, or they don't know that maybe a phone call at the beginning of the process would save a lot of hassles. Public infrastructure and services, you know, on the one hand, Berry has water and sewer capacity available. They have plenty of adequate electric service and a lot of the things that people need. On the other hand, we've probably all been driving on the roads lately. That's the wrong time of year for that, but, you know, there's a lot of that sort of infrastructure that continually needs work. And the last section talks about the Berry Area Development Corporation and the Berry Partnership, and, and their role in, in some of the things that happened, happen and go on. Berry City is, has a state designated downtown. And the Berry Partnership is actually the organization that's designated as part of that to sort of manage that process. And we talked about, you know, some of the other things the city could do with to, to get access to more grant money. I think I'll stop there and see if anybody has any other thoughts or comments about, about this section. Hey, if not, then why don't we go on to goals and strategies? So now, Wendy, this is the part where we're talking about things we maybe can do, or maybe have already done, to, to try to impact all the things discussed above. And the first one was to establish a diversified and vibrant local economy that provides jobs and can sustain the city's residents and revitalizes and develops the city's industrial sites, commercial areas, and downtown business district. And then there's a long list of, of things to do. So one is investing in public infrastructure and service, and the city's done some of that, but there's certainly plenty more to do. At the time, there was talk about increasing wireless internet service throughout the downtown. I don't know if that's still an issue, or probably still is, but there are certainly places downtown that have wireless internet access available.
Yeah, there's several businesses that offer free Wi-Fi if you, when you walk by.
Yeah.
So I, I think that's been, that's, that's been done.
Implementing the city's land use strategies. So again, I think the, the zoning bylaw has had a lot of amendments that try to accomplish some of these things. I, I know that their efforts, again, the Berry Partnership does a lot- Uh I, I know that their efforts, um again, the Berry Partnership does a lot of things to try to uh bring people into downtown and into the city. And you know, but certainly there's more that could be done. Uh the next one is the ordinances, adopt ordinance needed to address issues with appearance and maintenance of downtown storefronts and building facades and vacant storefronts. And we've certainly talked about that and there's been plenty of discussion about that in the community over the last few months. But it continues to be a challenge. Uh talking about making Berry more pedestrian friendly. And yeah, that's everything from sidewalk maintenance to there, should there be more sidewalks built? Should there be bike paths or should the bike paths that have been laid out and kind of imagined be actually completed and so on? Well, that, I don't know, why maybe that would be a good place to start, stop for a second and see if anybody has any thoughts on, on those items.
I'm interested to know what everyone thinks. Where we lack in being pedestrian friendly. Does that mean the areas of the city that don't have sidewalks?
Well, I guess I would offer a couple of thoughts, but then I should be quiet and let others talk. One is that there were, there were one or two planning commissioners who were very into that issue. The other is that um, you know, I think there are challenges for people who live in neighborhoods out of downtown, or where can you ride a bike safely? You know, where can you walk safely? Which can be everything from sidewalks to street lighting to, to maintenance of sidewalks and so on. So I think there are, there are a lot of challenges. So I think Raylene had her hand up and then Becky.
I think also it comes down to um not necessarily just sidewalks, but visible um crosswalks. Uh a lot of them are not. Uh the step downs, some of the sidewalks are cut out for crosswalks so that it gives you a little space, especially on Main Street. To step out a little bit so that cars can notice you if there's parking on the side of the street, which a lot of the side streets have parking. And so it gi- it gives that safe space um just to get out in the road a little bit, which you don't see that on the side streets as much as you do on Main Street. But um definitely more visible crosswalks. And then the biggest thing that I hear a lot about is um for people commuting, um it's not having a safe space to wait for the bus. That we could have, make that more, more friendly and um accommodating.
There's also, was discussion previously and probably could continue, there's a lot of traffic calming strategies that can be used and, and one of the ones that you mentioned is the bulb out for um pedestrians across. It also narrows the road, which should cause cars to slow down a little bit when they're going faster than they should. It was an example, but there are plenty of other examples. So I should go on to Becky.
Yeah, thanks. Um I think I, everything that's been said already. And then the other thing that I have heard from folks is in the wintertime, um sidewalks are not accessible. Like I had a conversation with some um older adults who were trying to walk from home downtown. And uh they had to walk in the street in the wintertime in the dark um because the sidewalks were just completely closed off by snow piles that were, snow piles from the street that were blocking the sidewalks for them to be able to safely cross intersections. So I think that's another consideration when we think about, even if we have the infrastructure, especially in the winter, be, having the capacity to maintain that um so that folks can use it.
Wendy?
Uh I would agree with you there and I think, oh, I don't know where the particular commissioner lived prior, but I mean, there's a lot of um, you know, hillsides in Berry and without uh that don't have sidewalks. You know, I mean, I live on a street that doesn't have a sidewalk and it's very hilly, so um, and narrow, you know? So I think, I think that probably leads to it, you know, what, what they may have been thinking, so.
It gets a lot narrower in the winter. Comes and removes the big snowbanks.
Yeah, so, so that might be part of it.
Yeah, one thing just to think about in neighborhoods is I think the city has an ordinance that requires the property owner to maintain a clear sidewalk. When there is a sidewalk, even though it's in the public right of way, it's the responsibility of the homeowner to shovel it.
That's interesting.
And I suspect that many of you who have streets with sidewalks, notice that some people shovel their sidewalks and some don't. And some even have the snow from their driveway plowed into a big pile that covers the sidewalk. So um that's a challenge and um city could probably do a lot of enforcement and write tickets, but I suspect that wouldn't go over too well. Becky?
Well, I'm just, I just, I'm curious about that. And whether that also applies to like businesses and folks on like the, our main streets? Because these folks were coming down, I'm gonna say like Washington Street, so. And I will also say, I was walking right through downtown and climbing over snow piles um in front of, like on corners uh after some of our big snowstorms, so um I would just be curious.
You know, I know the city, I think they, they have a sidewalk plow and I don't know, because I don't live on a street that they would do that, but they go around and do that and, and the snowbanks are just a challenge because the snow's got to go somewhere. And the city, I think, in the downtown, as their time allows, they, they clear those things, but it's still pretty, pretty challenging. Wendy?
Other thing I um, I, I, I think could be an issue that I've heard, so you know, I work for the state, so when I go to the office, I go to Berry City Place and I have a lot of coworkers who don't feel necessarily safe walking downtown. Uh because there's not a lot of lighting, you know, and it's dark when they get there. Um so um, you know, that could be, lighting could be leading to um some of people's issues or hesitancies too.
I find that interesting, Wendy. When we redid, so the folks that walk from Zan Leoni Place over to City Place, there was all kinds of new lighting put in. And of course, the lights on the, excuse me, on um North Main Street are lit up. And that, that folks still feel that it's still too dark.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it is in the metroway parking lot where the parking lot is.
That's a private lot, though. We have no control over that.
Right, so that, right, I'm just saying, yeah, I'm just saying like that's where, you know, it just goes into that, kind of the perception of it not being safe. And I realize it's a private lot and that, that is the lot for Berry City Place. But um, you know, I think there's other areas downtown that, like there's not a lot of lighting behind at night behind some of the, the big buildings downtown. Yeah, and you know, you know, unless you're walking with other people, like if you want to walk by yourself, like it could be you know, a scary thing for people. So I think that might lead to people's hesitancy too. Like I wouldn't want to walk downtown by myself at night. You know, I'm sure a lot of people have heard the same stories I have and I don't know if I would feel safe walking downtown alone at night. So I mean, maybe there's something else that um we just haven't, you know, thought of or talked about, you know?
This is interesting. Um of course, I'm from Western New York and um so I grew up knowing that um and experiencing that stores and restaurants always stayed open much later. And things here in Vermont and especially right now post-COVID, as, as we say, the sidewalks roll up for the night pretty early. I always wonder how do we get people walking around in the downtown and to your point, Wendy, in a safe manner?
Well, an observation I would make, because we visit our daughter in Boston and I walk her dog at night when we're visiting at like eleven or eleven-thirty. And if you want to see streets that are really lit up, you can go to Boston. They have, it's amazing how much light they have. And, and we might not appreciate that amount of light because it would be shining in all our houses and wherever else, but but it's amazing how bright the lights are and how you really don't feel that many places where you walk into the shadows at all. I don't know if that's helpful or, or not, but it's a different, different environment. And it's just built, you know, about, there's just a lot more light from everything. So should we move on to the next portions? Recognize a lot of, large percentage of land in the city is suitable for commercial or industry, industrial use. But that it's, that it's already, a lot of it is already developed, could be better used. There are some brownfields that need eventually to be remedi- remediated. So you know, I think there's always a challenge to continue assisting business owners and, and you know, building owners to um you know, make, use, take, use the city's permitting process and, and avoid headaches. And I think, you know, that is an area where, where we could partner with, with the um Berry Partnership or Berry Area Development to make sure that, and I think there is some of that, to make sure that when businesses are thinking about locating in Berry, that probably one of their first stops should be talking to Janet's office. Just to outline some plans and, and finding out what sorts of things they might want to be thinking about to make the process as smooth and easy as possible, or to learn right upfront that this won't work in this place.
And that does occur.
Yeah. So probably occurs both ways, where people come in early on and talk to you and there are others where they come in after they've made all these plans and learn that that's not going to work here.
Yes, that has happened.
Uh next thing is talking about retaining Berry's heritage as a blue collar community that's affordable for working class families and offers a great quality of life. So this talks about, you know, some of the things, again, the getting back to people in Berry seem to be the ones who have the most perception and maybe Berry's not a great place. And uh so fostering a greater sense of civic pride among Berry City residents. And one observation I make is there are, I think, a fair number of younger families that are moving to Berry because they think Berry's a great place. And that's what the Berry Social Club is about. That's what some of the other relatively newer downtown businesses are kind of about. Uh is people who have, who have chosen Berry and moved here. And I think one of the things that would be important to do is try to find a way to hear from some of those people about what is it that attracted them to Berry and what can we do to make it better and, and work, you know, build on the things that we already have. And then there's just continuing uh to get participation in the various events. And so, you know, that, that's ongoing. And then finding new uses and opportunities and promote investment in the city's vacant, obsolete or underu- utilized buildings. And that's a challenge. I think sometimes people who own buildings don't want to invest in them or can't afford it or can't, don't know how that, that they could have access to a lot of resources to help them. I think that could apply to housing as well as uh commercial. I think there's, there's a number of vacant apartments in Berry because the landlord doesn't want to spend the money to rent, to, to renovate or fix, or the landlord had a bad experience and decided they just don't want to rent anymore, but they don't want to sell the property either. So I think there's a lot, a lot to unpack in that section. So maybe another get, time to stop and see if there's anything people want to add to that.
Contribute, um a couple of our empty buil- well, one empty building towards the um, the end of the downtown towards the, where all the banks are, uh that's been empty for a while, the Page and Campbell Building. Uh that's been bought um by Malone Properties. And if any of you know who Pat Malone is, he, he does things with buildings he buys. So um I'm hoping that within the next, you know, six months, eight months, we'll see something in that building. Um we all know that BADC is trying to, to do something with the Jacobs Building. Um and to David's point, there are some building owners, and not just in the downtown, but, but some of our apartment buildings, they either don't want to or they can't. So it, I, I think it's a healthy mix of factors.
The thing that is unfortunate is I think there are also people who, who might want to but can't, but that they're not aware of the resources and things that might be available um at the state, you know, with state programs or federal money that might flow to help do those things. So that's a, you know, that's a challenge. You know, I was at a meeting recently, the Housing Task Force, talking about uh ADUs and the, the infill project that the uh Regional Planning Commission did. So Berry has a map of all of the parcels in Berry and, and an ability to drill down and see where there might be opportunities for, for accessory dwelling units or more, you know, more units in a, in a building, so. It's a, it's a pretty powerful tool of, I hope. And, and I think it would be pretty helpful to the Planning Commission in the long run as well to, you know, when we want to know about a certain neighborhood or property, can really drill down and look at the properties. Or for example, looking at, so what does a hundred foot setback mean in the downtown buildings? You can, you can focus in on those parcels and draw a line that goes back a hundred feet and see what's left behind it, as an example. So the next item for Berry, yeah, so to remain a regional employment center that provides livable wage jobs for a large percentage of the city's workforce and workers from surrounding communities. And it speaks to revitalizing downtown to um you know, make act, make, to think about economic goals and strategies, uh kind of with a long-term perspective. Market, Market City is a place where people can live and work in close proximity and then there's a lot of benefits. I think there's been some efforts with that. I know Berry Area Development has done some of that thing, that sort of thing on their website, but there's a lot more that could be done. Uh talking about identifying and attracting companies from outside the city that will complement existing businesses. But I think there's also accessing and, and expansion of existing businesses within the city. So both of those things need, need to occur. But I think a lot of the growth is sort of, can be organic and from people that are already here. Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
This is Becky. Um sorry, I didn't get my hand raised, but I'm curious, um. These are all really great things to do. But I just wonder like how much can the city do? And I, I guess maybe this is more of a philosophical question for Janet about like, what's the purpose of the plan? Um because when you, we look at the next section, like there's a handful of next steps, but they don't cover, you know, like they don't address all the things in this section. Um and a lot of these things feel like they're either like the city and partners or just like the city doesn't have the resources to do these things. So I guess I'm kind of just wondering what, uh, wondering about that.
Wendy, you have your hand up?
Yeah, and it's kind of in like, um, I had a, a thought. Is, um, to make the next steps and goals like more attainable, maybe. Could, like, we've talked a lot about the partnership and B A D C, I'm wondering if we could. Like, if someone from those, um, places could come in to maybe one of our planning commission meetings. To talk with us about, you know, some specific things that they have ideas on where we could. You know, maybe modify, like, when we go to modify this plan to create or put in here some. Some realistic, like, how we're gonna get there, um, things in here, so. Maybe then we can say, oh, well, yeah, this is, this is the next steps for doing all these things, like, these are really specific. Like utilizing those groups for that, can, can we do that kind of thing? I don't know if we can.
No, we certainly can, and, and a lot of the things in this section too are things that, that those organizations. Do, you can judge whether they're doing them well or not, but they're doing them, and that's part of their missions. But I think when we start the city plan, it would be good to invite those folks to come in and participate early. And I think the last time around, they kind of came in at the last minute and, you know, picked away at stuff and, but didn't. Didn't really understand what was going on and didn't participate in the opportunity for developing this stuff. I think for outside organizations is to get involved early. And, and help formulate it rather than wait till everything's done and then come in and criticize this or that. So that's my, that's my little soapbox.
Yeah, they could come in earlier, like, I think that'd be great.
But there's no reason we couldn't invite them, come in and just tell the planning commission about what they do and how it relates to this. Even if we're not working on a new plan just to increase our, you know, know, know the stuff.
Yeah.
Um, I have some thoughts, um, to, to try to answer Becky's question, so a municipal plan is. Is not, not, I hope you understand that it doesn't mean everything, all these things have to be done by the planning commission. It is, it is a plan of dreams and goals and hopes. To hopefully be attained, um, that covers not just B A D C and the partnership, but all of our committees. That are city committees, some of our outside folks. Some of the, uh, it's probably what, three or four years ago now, we actually. In, tried to invite and did invite some of the other committee folks. To come to our planning commission meetings to literally do with them what we're doing right now. For example, I think, uh, there's a whole section about recreation and we invited. The rec department, uh, director at the time and the recreation committee. And we, we went through some of these things with them, so hopefully the next time around, we get more people engaged. We all know not everybody wants to be there and stick it out. But it's, it's a roadmap for a lot of organizations to hopefully dive in and, and. Make our city a better place, continue to make it a better place. So, I, I just wanted to be sure that everybody understood this is not just the planning commission's mission. It's a mission for everybody.
I think, I think that's a good point, and I think one of the challenges. Is that as we get to the next steps, it, it lists partners. But I've not really ever seen a good mechanism to, um. Sort of follow up and, you know, so make sure the partners know that they're partners in this and they have a part to play. But also, uh, that maybe they're doing something. So, that's something to give some thought to as well. Who's responsible to, you know, open a grocery store in Berry City, and it lists a bunch of partners, but. Do they even know that they're partners? Do they, do that, is, is there some way that it's being organized or addressed or? Some kind of reporting back, and I don't even know if that reporting back would go to the planning commission or to the city council or. Or some other forum, but that's a challenge in these things.
And maybe getting, you know, some of those folks in the room, um, together, um, to talk about it. Maybe it can make some of these things, like a grocery store, for example, um, more attainable. Or maybe they're working on different efforts and could combine forces and maybe they don't even know they're working on the same thing, you know? So it might be helpful too, to have them, helpful to them also.
But, you know, the challenge sometimes is, we can ask them, but then they don't come to meetings and they don't want to play, or they don't. Don't want to take the time to do that.
Right.
So, can move on to number three, I'm mindful that we're, you know, we're getting close, closer to sevens. So, the next item is for Berry City and its Economic Development Department, partners, support entrepreneurship as a primary mission. I think we've talked about that a little bit. But it's, you know, supporting the economic development, support local business startups and, and. You know, there are revolving loan funds and there are, is assistance that, you know, can be available to some of these folks. And the next item is for Berry City workforce to have skills and training, opportunities needed to remain compatible, competitive in the global marketplace. Uh, and so on, and, you know, again, there's, uh, attracting educated people, but also skilled workforce and workforce training for. Uh, trades like what the things a career center, uh, does. And, you know, right now that's located at the, at the, uh, at Spalding, but they're going to. They're seeking to move to a new location and, and build a state of the art building in, in, in Berry Town is what the plan is right now. So I don't know if there's any thoughts on those items. Again, if we're, when we get to redoing the plan, we should probably be talking to the career center and seeing how they play into this.
Nothing really specific, but one thing I would think we would maybe want to take into account with the revision when we get there is that when this was written. Um, I, I'm pretty sure telework existed, but it wasn't as prolific, prolific as it is now, so I think taking that into account would be, would be valuable.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that's absolutely true. That, yeah, offers a set of, uh, challenges and opportunities for sure. So, next steps, um, first one is implementing the state approved TIF district. Uh, and I think that's pretty well moved along, and as far as I know, it's sort of. Moving its way towards the end of the process, I don't know if Janet has anything she would want to add to that.
Sure, um, in- interestingly, we haven't, we have one more year to finish obligating our TIF funds. So we've been, um, trying to figure out where to spend the money. Some of the TIF funds will go toward, uh, the new Seminary Street housing. The city has to put water and sewer and storm drain on Seminary Street to support that project. So the TIF funds will cover that, um, but the legislature is talking about extensions for TIFs. And even what they call mini TIFs, um, so smaller footprinted TIFs. Tax increment financing districts, so I think because more and more municipalities are using this mechanism. To help with infrastructure and projects and development. There have been a lot more suggestions to use the TIF in a different capacity, so like I said. We still have a little bit more time on our existing TIF and we're hoping to apply for an extension. You just never know when some of these projects come along, there might be another Summer Street project somewhere else. Um, that's going to need the funds and we hope to have them available.
Hey, anyone else on TIFs? Next one is opening a grocery store in Berry, and I think we've talked about that, but. Things have not gone as this plan envisioned, so that's going to need some, some rethinking and. How important it is and, and what form that might take, or whether, whether that's still the, the. The, um, aspiration for the community. Okay, complete planning for and implement the merchant row process, project, um, so there was plan done. I think Janet, there's supposed to be some work done this summer, isn't there? I don't know that it's implementing that plan so much as, just sprucing up and repaving the merchants row area.
Yeah, it's, it has nothing to do with the TIF.
Well, no, I'm talking about the planning, I'm on item three here. Planning for and implement the merchant row project.
Right, which is this whole area right out behind City Hall.
Yep.
These parking lots and area, to my knowledge, we're not doing anything yet.
Well, I thought there was supposed to be some repaving this, maybe even this early summer. That there was, that the city was talking to the merchants who own, um, the land adjacent to Merchants Row, but that's private property. About whether they wanted to, to, um. Tie into the paving project, because they could, paving done for a lot less than they would if they went and did it on their own.
There could be, um, I, I don't know everything every other department is working on sometimes.
Right, but what I don't think it is, is, is implementing that plan, which was pretty ambitious.
Correct.
And again, that's something maybe, um, the planning commission might want to look at sometime. And also think about whether it's still even relevant, I think some work, some parts were, parts were worked on, but anyhow. That's in the plan and you should be looking at it. Uh, and the same thing with the North Main to Summer Street project, uh, and I think that now is kind of in a, is part of the work that. That we started to do and now I gather is on hold because of, um, federal grant and funding issues and challenges. Is that correct Janet?
It is somewhat connect, correct, after I answered, um, the question to David and another commissioner. I got an email late yesterday afternoon saying, the project is back on. So I have a meeting next Thursday and we may be seeing the, the folks, the consultants in Berry City. For the charrette in April now, they're anxious to get going, so. I think that's exciting, because I was afraid it was going to be on hold forever.
But that was really, you know, the main, North Main to Summer was. Was addressing that, but it needed to be updated, and now it's really expanded to be a much bigger, bigger project.
That is correct.
So that gets us through the, um, the next steps, and the last part is benchmarks. And I don't know that there is a whole lot, um, to discuss with that, but obviously those would have to be updated. Um, and some of the, some of the targets here, I think, may have been met, some of them have not been met and aren't likely to be met. I think a lot of that is sort of aspirational. So I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on, on that. I always think, if, you know, we are going to have benchmarks, they have to be things that are measurable and, and in some way. Attainable or attainable by things the city might do, so that's just the thought on that.
And I wonder the next consultant that we hire to help us with our plan does things very differently, so. We might not have this same type of format.
Yeah. And there might be a lot more electronic component to all this stuff and interactive things and whatever, that'll be interesting. So I think that gets us through the economic.
Hand up David.
Oh, I, oh, I, yeah, I'm not seeing who has their hand up, but go ahead.
Hey, I just had a question, um, I noticed like number four on the. The, um, benchmark has a different target date and I just didn't know. How those target dates were picked, if, if you know what I mean, like, why, why are some twenty twenty six and some, and the last one, for example, twenty twenty three? Like, is that, um. Like, do you know why that is? I'm just curious, like.
I, I don't know why, but I'll offer a theory.
Okay.
That is that the twenty three is a typo. When we updated the plan.
I think you're right.
The sixth except that one, that's my theory.
Okay. I was just curious, yeah, these are definitely gonna have to be updated, like, I, I looked up the per capita income. And that is well exceeded already, so. According to the Census Bureau.
Yep. And, and, you know, we set these benchmarks and then you have inflation or other things happen. And all of a sudden, it looks great, but in real dollars, it's not so great.
Right, it would be good to like, I wonder if there's different benchmarks that would express like a reality of the situation.
Have to think about it or, 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 um. Or, or make them a little more specific, so, you know, benchmark, like, income could be some kind of inflation adjustment and say what that is.
Yep. Yeah. Okay, you can move on, sorry, I just wanted to ask that.
Okay, so, uh, now we're at staff. Oh, let's, uh, I guess we're actually at new business, does anybody have any new business? And if not, um, our next meeting is scheduled for April tenth. So, just get that on your calendars, and then we're, now we're ready for staff updates.
Sure, I, I'm hoping if you haven't had a chance to read through the packet, uh, and get to these last couple pages. That you take the time, um, I try to make these as informative as possible. One thing I did not put on here was, um, we're working on, on the city budget right now and. I have lost the ability to fund the planner position at this time. So when I do my presentation at the end of March in front of city council, um, if anybody's there and watching. You know, I don't want any of you to be surprised that it's been, it hasn't been removed, it just isn't going to get funded. In the, in the ensuing year, so, because we needed to find a lot of money and. All of us departments really, really, uh, we're right down, we, we cut a lot out of our budgets, like, I, I didn't think I could cut anymore. And I did, so, um, I think if you read the Times Argus article from Tuesday night's. Um, city council meeting, I think Dave Delkor quoted what, um, you know, what the, the budget started out with. And what, uh, the council asked staff to attain to, um, which we, we did pretty good. So, doing a lot of cutting and they're hoping to do some other funding, so. I just, I just wanted you all to know that, um, it's unfortunate, but not only did I lose this position for this time. The, um, Public Works Director lost the ability to fill the, um, engineering technician position. So, those are just off the table for now.
I think all the departments took pretty big, pretty big hits. And, you know, some of that might, might be recovered if the state allocates some money.
One can hope, for sure.
But I don't think you can plan on it right now, so the city's really not planning on it.
Yeah.
Start.
Right, right, um, uh, obviously.
Janet, can we, could I ask, like, um, what does that mean for you and for the planning commission to not, I mean, I know that role has been vacant for a long time?
Just a couple of years. We continue like we currently are.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, um, I really feel that, um, with the buyouts on my plate, it's, it's really taken a lot of my time. And, uh, I believe that several of those, I think they're going to start coming down, uh, the houses will start coming down. What I wanted to say was, um, we actually, just before this meeting, I got an email from Vermont Emergency Management. They have presented me with the very first buyout appraisal value to present to a homeowner. So they're really starting to come in for, for a lot of the, a lot of the vacant buildings that are, we're gonna buy out. The other thing is the, the two heirs properties, the, on. The other thing is the, the two heirs properties that on 10, 10 and 19 was second. I have to apply for Brownfield redevelopment money. We have to be able to present to FEMA that it's a clean site before. Before we buy it and take it down. So that means phase ones. So I've, I'm still working on what we call the industrial sites, but some of the residential is really starting to, excuse me, come along. We have three buildings that are multi-unit, so those owners. Will have to have their tenants relocated before the actual buyout happens. So it, that's a little bit of a challenge for those property owners. But I, I, it's hard to believe and I know it sounds odd to say, but. Less than two years, we're, we're at the, we're at the table, starting to literally. Own properties and talk about taking them down. I'm, I'm amazed, so. So that's a big thing. I started to and told you folks earlier that. We're back on with the transportation planning grant. So like I said, I have a meeting next week to get that going again and hopefully the charrette will happen. It could very well happen the week of our meeting. I don't know. That'll be up to the consultant. So that's a good thing. Both the assessors and appraisers are out. Right now, the appraisers. Are reviewing property in the northeast section of the city, which is basically Sixth Street back to. Brook Street, that whole quadrant up in the top. Let's see, what else? Yeah, just don't forget those of you who your seats are up, if you're gonna, if you're gonna renew. You have to go through the process, just like you were a new commissioner. That's, it follows the volunteer policy now. And don't forget to do your ethics training. If you need any help or anybody has any questions, feel free to reach out. And lastly, the vacant building discussion David asked me to have. When Berry City. I would say probably it happened before the flood. There was, the discussion about vacant buildings rise, it ebbs and flows, right? It becomes a real angsty thing and then it kind of settles down and. While it remains very frustrating, it's very frustrating to me. It's, first of all, it's not an ordinance that I take care of. It rests with. The code enforcement folks, but I'm always here. Our offices work together. We work really hard to be a, a good team. The city attorney drafted a huge revision to our existing vacant building ordinance. And then we had a flood and everybody was working on post flood. I reminded the city manager, we have this draft sitting out there that really needs to be picked up and looked at. The city council also is very interested in a short-term rental ordinance, so. Are both of our offices have been very busy trying to figure out what is the priority at the moment. But I can always share with you folks what the draft looks like. I'll be honest, I haven't looked at it in like a year and a half. I don't know if it's realistic. A lot of it takes enforcement, which we don't have the bodies for. So we want to make an ordinance that's realistic. But also meets the needs that we want for the city. And, and a lot of times what happens is when someone gives you a draft, they've, they've taken this from some, they've plagiarized this section and. And this section and it's a conglomeration and it might not even make any sense for us. But we do have this draft out there that should get looked at or in at least compared to what we already have. And someone decides, does it need an overhaul and go with this new draft or what could potentially get. Revised with the existing vacant building ordinance that meets and gets people to take care of their buildings. So that's really where we're at with vacant buildings at the moment. I don't know if the fire marshal has had an opportunity. To look at that draft that was presented to staff almost two years ago. I can certainly ask, but I know it just sits out there. So I know that's a long way of saying we've got something, but we've, we're not there yet.
Yep. No, I'll just, you know, come to the forefront. We had people at the. Planning commission meeting asking, you know, you guys should do something. So anyhow. That, that was why, why I asked for the update.
Yep, no, totally understand. It was one of those things that at the time. Maybe there was the perception that you folks were able to rewrite an ordinance and present it. Probably as a concerted effort with city staff, anybody could update an ordinance and present it to city council. But staff hasn't even looked at potential changes.
And, you know, a challenge is, you know, an ordinance needs to be applied equally. You know, you gotta make sure that you're not going to. Spend the next five years in court, spending a lot of money litigating something about whether it's even legal. Or constitutional or whatever else. So it's a, you know, it's a complicated issue. So I think that's, that's your report. I expect next item is roundtable. Does anybody? Any commissioners have anything they want to chat about or bring up or suggest for future meeting? If not, then I guess the next item would be adjournment. So if somebody wants to make that motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. It's Wendy.
So moved by Wendy. Is there a second?
I'll second. Raylene.
Raylene seconds. So I guess. Take a vote. All in favor of adjournment? Say aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
Okay, so we are officially adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
See you next month. Bye bye.